For Thursday, May 19th, 2022. And with that, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you would like to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to
republic which stands one nation under God indivisible,
liberty, justice for all.
And I will note that all members of the board are present with trustee Veronica Cairedo joining us online. So, welcome, and we are beginning with item 2.5, the Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year 2022. Dr. Mario.
I would like to turn the mic over to Liz Austin-Klaus, who is our CSCE president, who will make the presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here in person. And I really thank Dr. Mario for allowing me to do a full presentation this time, more of the pre-COVID way of doing it. So I appreciate that. We have, I'm going to announce the four honorable mentions and then the outstanding classified employee of the year. The things that I read are taken from the nomination forms. So I have a few brief statements for each one of them. So I will start with the first honorable mention. The honorable mention works as a lab teaching assistant for the film and TV production department. In this role, she works closely with the students and faculty managing a huge inventory of state-of-the-art equipment and making sure that student filmmakers are able to get what they need when they need it. She is an excellent communicator and works superbly with other departments, helping to build a stronger campus community. She is 100% reliable and will follow through on what needs to be done. She is unremotely positive and can do. She is also active with anti-racism education work. Please recognize Chaney Yu as a 2022 honorable mention. Chaney, I have something for you. I can't put it through the TV, but you do get an honor earned for that. Okay, the next honorable mention works in the music department as a lab teaching assistant. He assists faculty with various budgets, student worker needs, room schedules, and equipment issues. He is always quick with a reply or solution to a problem. After COVID brought every department to a screeching halt, he helped the students and faculty learn Jamulus, a software program that allows music students to interact and perform in real time online. The result was SBCC becoming the first college in the nation to have live performances of students from their homes over Zoom in a real-time concert. He does his work without complaint or self-aggrandizement and is always available to help faculty and students alike. Please recognize James Watson as a 2022 honorable mention. Next honorable mention works as a lab tech in the chemistry department. She goes above and beyond for her department. She's been the sole stockroom worker since September 2018, ever since her counterpart left the department. This whole time, she's been doing the work of two people, working overtime each and every week, not compromising on the quality of the service she provides. She has ensured the educational experience of hundreds of chemistry students is not only available to them, but at the highest level of excellence. She's also a safety officer, is a member of the SBCC Facilities and Safety Committee, and takes advantage of professional development with a focus on equity and anti-racism. Please recognize Tracy Reynolds as a 2022 honorable mention.
Thank you. And like Cindy Rogers and Kate Parker, I am also not that fond of public speaking, but I really appreciate it. And to those of you that nominated me, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And Cindy, thank you for being my carpool buddy and keeping me coming back day after day, no matter how exhausted I am, or how stressed out, or how much I just want to stay in bed. I have to give you a ride to work, so.
Okay, this honorable mention works as an admin assistant too for the dean of student services. In this role, she wears many hats. During the pandemic, she stepped in to assist with phone and chat times for multiple departments and student services. She also coordinated the details of the reopening of the student services building, from creating signage to working with facilities and IT, to getting PPE, to helping staff and students check out Chromebooks. She even brought in an impressive array of home baked goods to welcome everyone back to the office. She treats all students and colleagues with utmost kindness and respect and consistently displays a warmth and professionalism that is a testament to how much she cares about the SBCC community. Please recognize Becky Saffold as a 2022 honorable mention.
I thank everybody. This really means a lot to me, to be to be nominated, and we just have so many people, so many good people here that I really do feel it's an honor to be here, and thank you so much, everybody.
Okay. The 2022 Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year works as a student program advisor in the EOPS department. She has worked at SBCC for 14 years in various roles that support our parenting student population, as well as supporting the well-being of the SBCC community. Her primary role has been coordinating the SPARC, Single Parent Arriving Ready for College Program, as well as being the CARES Cow Works Advisor at the college. Aside from her role as a SPA, she has served on many communities throughout her tenure at the college. Currently, she serves as a CSE, on the CSE negotiating team, is part of the CSEA Political Action Committee, serves on many hiring committees as the Equity Representative, and is a collaborative member of the Title V HSI Grant Collaboration Team. Those who've had the opportunity to work alongside her for any amount of time have most certainly witnessed her tireless and unwavering commitment to serving the most marginalized students on campus and throughout Santa Barbara County. Her contributions to the college run deep, her influence in the community is long-term, and her collaborative commitment to change is exceptional. Please recognize Chelsea Lancaster as the 2022 Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year.
Well, I didn't think I'd see this day. My mom was like, are you going to wear something political or say something political? And I'm like, of course I am, because the work is political and parenting is political, especially for our moms in the margins. As some of you know, I started as a single parent student here, as a teen mom, as a survivor of many forms of abuse. And I found my home in EOPS. I tried at 18. I wasn't ready, and I didn't have the proper support, undeveloped brain, one-year-old, lack of childcare, and needed to heal. I came back at 26 and was able to be really successful at SBCC, thanks to the support of EOPS Care and other folks on campus. Transferred to UCSB, my daughter recently graduated from college and from Mills College in Oakland, and I'm just such a firm believer in mother work is the work that I really want SBCC to take seriously. Single mothers and single parents have explicitly been excluded from the equity conversation, and that is a huge injustice. When you educate a mom from the margins, you heal a community, you heal a family, you create new cycles, and their children are more likely to go to college and to have such better outcomes in life. So I just want to name again, the parenting is political when we think about attacks on reproductive justice, on a formula crisis, a housing crisis, everything that we're up against. I would really just lovingly request, because I'll probably not going to be here for too much longer, so I'm taking this moment to like lovingly charge Santa Barbara City College with providing a better web of support for our single-parent students, because this is dual-generation work, and their children are coming here. I run the SPARC program. I just had my first, I had a grandmother, my first year that I ran SPARC in 2011, because her daughter was in jail for, based on drug offenses, and she was parenting her grandchildren and needed support. And now her daughter just did SPARC with me, and she's an amazing leader in the community now. So I just really want to name how important this work is, and this isn't about me, this is about the work. And for all my colleagues and all the other people that were nominated, y'all inspire me, you're amazing. And we've really, across campus, been able to grow in relationships so much more since the pandemic with my union. So I really appreciate that, and just everybody in EOPS is amazing. So thank you so much. Sorry for soapboxing it, but I couldn't help myself.
And that concludes the presentation. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to do it in person this time. Thank you.
A pleasure, and so many thanks to our award winners, our nominees, and of course, our employee of the year. It's just, it's an inspiration to see you all here, and even the one that's on Zoom, hello. And it's a thrill to be back. It's wonderful to hear about your accomplishments, and thank you for your speech. That was right on. With that, we're going to move to item 2.6, items to be taken out of order, of which I think we have none. That brings us to closed session. So we are going to adjourn to closed session. We're going to take to consider items 3.3, 3.4, 3.5, and 3.6. We will return time certain at 5:00 PM, and we will see you then. Thank you.
That brings us to item five, public comment. Do we have any general public comments at this time? And is that person here? All right. Okay, please come on up.
Good afternoon, board and everyone else here. And I wanted to start off by congratulating class of 2022. Amazing, so proud of all of them. And thank you to all of the counselors, food service, everybody that was there to support them through that. And thank you to our student trustee here to represent the students again next year coming back. Also, a big shout out to the food pantry that was helped my family with food security this last semester. They're awesome and environmental agriculture that was providing food to them. And from there, I want to move to my topic for today. I was kind of following this process as we were all working through this COVID mitigation operation process over this last semester. So I just wanted to follow up with some of the information from the survey. The, the plan was not, not very popular among the students. And just wanted to hit, highlight some of the findings from that survey. The students found that there was significant barriers to their education at a rate of twice as much as our employees did. And so I'm just here to speak for the students that there's, there's some issues with the operations plan. I think that it's very telling that, you know, a percent representing over 9,000 people in our community found the check-ins and ineffective use of resources. And now as we move forward and we don't have like as much of the CARES money and stuff going on, we're spending our own money on all of that. I think we really need to look at the fact that this is providing, causing a lot of barriers and people are not finding it to be effective use of the resources. Another topic on the, the survey was, was the masking. 63% of the students representing over nearly 1,000 people in our community said that masking should not be more stringent than our county health requirements. And in terms of the vaccine mandate, 52% of the students representing over 8,000 students said that they did not want to continue with the vaccine mandate. Of the employees, the 63, 66% that said they do want to represent 1,000 people in our community. So when we look at these percentages, I just think it's important to recognize that the students are being heavily impacted at a very, very large number by these policies. The outcome, the presumable outcome of this, of our policies that we're looking at the vaccine mandate over the fall. And I just really feel like that is just way too long. We've already had these students miss a year of school. And now with pushing it off to fall, a lot of these classes they need will not be available in the spring. And so they're missing out on two years of their education. And it's, at this point, there's been a lot of changes in what we've seen come through the science in terms of, we'll start with the CDC, they're saying that the vaccine is not preventing transmission or infection. And so therefore we should really just not be preventing a quarter of the population of our county. A quarter of the population of our county does not meet the requirements to come to our community college. So that's 100,000 people. That's a huge barrier just in our community. If we are looking at, you know, 2018 numbers of 20,000 people enrolled here, that's 5,000 people that were not able to meet that requirement to come to our school. So it's a real shame, and especially now that we see all these things happening in our state. For instance, I know at a time Cal OSHA was saying our unvaccinated people had to wear masks in the workplace. That has been dropped even in our own county. Unvaccinated people are no longer required to test to go to work for the county. These things are being dropped because in during the Omicron surge, we saw that there was just not a discrepancy in, in infection and transmission with unvaccinated people. And so we, we just shouldn't really be imposing this anymore on our students, on our community. I just ask you to look at this again. I know it's shared governance. I know that, you know, the, the administration is looking at this now. But if we look at the original resolution one, it's, it's really no longer relevant with Omicron being one third rate of hospitalizations. The Omicron variant we have now is even half rate of hospitalizations of that. And so resolution one is just, needs to be re, readdressed and by this board who is representing 100% of the people in our county, not just the 75% that meet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to item 6.1, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve or any changes to be made? Moved by trustee Everett. Segmented by trustee Diallo. And we're going to do a roll call vote since we have a board member who is with us online.
Yes, Kate, is this for the approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Pamina.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
You didn't call Everett. Hi. That's right.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to the communication section. We are at item 7.2, report from academic senate. Melanie Eckford Prosser. All right, I am so sorry to hear that. So we will not have a report today from 7.2. That brings us to 7.3. Do we have a report from associated students today or is it somewhere?
Sheesh, we need to let her in. I think she should be allowed. She's in the audience.
Yeah. All right, then we will have a presentation from our associated student president Allegra Kabu Kapua Kadambo.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. I hope you can hear me well. My internet is a bit unstable, but I hope I can get through my report. Um, I will start off with the update from the government with, we are having a new board with a new president, Churnor is our new president. We have a couple more folks as the, in the position of vice president of operations and finance, vice president of internal affairs and external affairs, also the student advocate and the student trustee. We will present them next meeting, the next four meeting, because it's going to be my last one. So we want to make sure that the board is aware of the new participant from the government. The second update is regarding the vaccination campaign throughout the semester. And yeah, this semester we've been working with the entire state government about advocating for the COVID vaccine. Sharing more facts about COVID, the vaccination process. So we are planning on doing more of that throughout this, the summer session one with advocating for safety and health protocols, educating students on vaccination, sharing facts about COVID again, and doing more tabling in person to answer questions that students may have. And we want to be more present for our students at the SHUT and Wey Campus. So that's the goal of this summer session one. We're going to be working with Churnor, our, our next student trustee and Tracy Nastle. She works with everything. She works with everything related to COVID-19. So we'll be working together with having flyers in person, just giving them away to our students so that way they're more informed with what's happening in our city and in the world in general regarding the COVID-19. And the last report that I'm having again is today is my, not my last meeting as the president, but next meeting is going to be my last one. And I just want to thank you ahead for your support and just listening to me and just being cautious about what we, we do as student government and what we've been working on. So thank you for that. And that was it for my report for today.
Thank you so much. And remind me, is Pittsburgh next year for school? Is that right?
Sorry, excuse me.
Are you in Pittsburgh next year for school?
Uh, no, Philadelphia.
Philadelphia, I was close.
Yeah, you were close.
Well, thank you so much for your service. I know the students have appreciated it. We've really appreciated it. We appreciate all of our interfaces with ASG. We do have a gift for you. And maybe Dr. Mario can see, how are we going to get her the gift?
I'll be in person next meeting.
Okay, all right, great. We've got, we've got it here for you and we will give it to you. We'll get it to you and thank you, Allegra.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item 7.0, trustee Hasland, do you want to jump in?
I, I do. Allegra, you have been a champion of, of a number of student oriented activities, including providing for extended library hours. I, I saw in a notice that the library hours have been extended. Is, is that sufficient and are students actually using it?
Yes. Yes.
I see you nodding, but I don't hear you.
Yes, it's really helpful for students and yes, a lot of them are using it. And I think also now it's summer session one, so we don't have a lot of people in person, but it's going to be really helpful for the classes moving forward for the full semester.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, classified employees, Liz Auchenclos.
Good afternoon again. Most of my report was my earlier presentation, but I wanted to say a few more things. One is I wanted to thank the board for having the, and the district for having the longevity. I was, as I said at that meeting, I kept waiting and hoping as it would happen and it did. So I thought it went off very well and I wanted to thank you for that. And I wanted to thank the president's office and cabinet for hosting our breakfast. This is Classified School Employee Week and I want to thank them for hosting the breakfast. I think everybody was really happy with that and it also went to, burritos went to the SHUT and the Wake Centers also, and I know they were happy to get those. And CSCA is, this is the first week of classes and some of our staff are really super busy, especially since we just finished with the last semester. So we may plan activities maybe in early June. We usually have some sort of activities we also do, but it was just easy for us to let staff get, get settled in this new term and then we'll do something then. But I wanted to thank you all for that. And then I want to make one comment to Dr. Hasland as far as the library hours. I just want to let you know that the district and even CSCA worked very hard to make that happen. They, we, someone need to be transferred to reorganization, which is still happening, but I have to give credit to the district for working very hard to make those extra hours in the library so that you were heard by staff and by administration. So I wanted to let you know that and thank the district for doing that for the students. And also I wanted to remind you that there's also the Learning Resources Center, which is also available for students to use. Because in that building, there's two areas, the library and the LRC. So they should take advantage of two of the, of the studyability in the, in the LRC. I just wanted to put a plug in for them too. So, thank you.
Liz, just a brief comment. What you said underscores the reality that this is not just one segment of the college being helpful to make sure that library hours are, are open, but it takes us all to make sure that something happens that should happen.
Yes, and it did. And I thank everybody for that and I thank you for bringing it up. So it could be, it could be recognized.
I would expect that, that that process be evaluated over time. And obviously if, if we, if we discover that it's not in use, a, a different solution will come.
I think that is a good possibility. And that's one of the things though, that since we brought up the topic that we may be looking at in other areas of the college too. I mean, the pandemic COVID has changed things and we really need to look at the big picture to see what we can do to structure the college so that it works best for our current reality. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is item 7.5, report from faculty association with Dr. Alzheimer, who is online.
Hello, honorable members of the Board of Trustees, President Parker and Superintendent Dr. Mario. Good afternoon and thank you for having Faculty Association report on your agenda again today. I'm in fact online. I would love to be with you in A211 right now, but I'm actually in Savannah, Georgia, attending a conference called TACTIC, which stands for Teachers of Accounting at Two-Year Colleges. This is a great conference. I'm very excited to be here and therefore I'm joining you today via Zoom. Before I start, I would like to thank Luke for starting my slides. If that's possible, thank you. And next I would express my, like to express my heartfelt congratulations to Chelsea Lancaster for today's award and for her compassionate remarks. And congrats and thank you also to the staff who received an honorable mentioning today. Without you, this institution would not work. I also would like to welcome our new academic senate president, Melanie Eckford Prosser. While she cannot be here today, I want to mention that she and I already have started talking about working together in the upcoming two years and we will continue our conversation in the next days and weeks. Next slide, please. And this leads me to my agenda for today. Not only the senate president has been newly elected, we also had elections for the Faculty Association Executive Board and we had the ratification vote for our most recent memorandum of understanding for salary adjustments. I would also like to talk about the most recent work and events done by the Faculty Association and a matter of great importance, our letter to you and how and when we are starting our conversation and working on our shared interest of fiscal stability for this institution. Next slide, please. Let's get started with the voting results, which I find very impressive. 118 of our members participated in the ratification vote. An overwhelming majority of 114 of them followed the recommendation of the FA board to accept the negotiated MOU on salary adjustments. So I'm very happy to report today that this MOU is ratified. You had already approved it at your special meeting two weeks ago and thank you for that. And thanks go also to the administration and staff, specifically our amazing team in accounting and in payroll, who are already working very hard on implementing the agreement over the upcoming weeks and months. Next slide, please. We combined the ratification vote with our FA board elections so, so that it would be a one ballot and you are done activity for everyone. Seven of the 11 positions on the FA board were up for election. As you can see, most of the elected board members are familiar names. There is one new part-time faculty on the team, Donna Lewis, who replaced our long-term part-time representative Jeff Gray. Jeff left the FA board this spring and I would like to use this opportunity to publicly thank him for the many years of service to the FA. Jeff always stepped up to the plate when there was extra work to do. He has left SBCC and we wish him the best for his new career steps. Going back to Donna Lewis, she's coming to us with prior experience in union work and I'm saying this a bit into the direction of Michael Shanahan and Greg Price, if he's still here. Donna is also a lawyer. She teaches for the School of Justice Studies here at SBCC. Next slide, please. On the next slide, I highlighted some of the events and things that the FA has been recently involved in. Lynn Stark and Jamie Campbell represented the association in the hiring committees for our two vice president positions. These were very work intense and important committees. Our FA board member and part-time faculty representative, Margarita Martin Del Campo, led the faculty procession during commencement last Friday. This, as the whole graduation event itself, was super exciting. And congratulations to all our accomplished students. The FA, we had our spring party to honor our retirees at the home of Kathy O'Connor. This was as well, a very enjoyable event. It was also an emotional event. Many of us had not seen each other outside of Zoom screen for a very long time. In fact, several of our new faculty I had never actually met in person. It was also very moving to hear from our newly retired colleagues as they shared many past memories and also words of wisdoms for those who continue. Another event that I did not list here, but I want to highlight is the longevity reception that Liz already talked about in which the administration had organized. It was also an exciting event and the bargaining units were invited to make some brief welcoming comments to an amazing group of long-term employees. Finally, I would like to highlight the two retreat workshops that were offered by the SBCC accreditation task force, where we had the opportunity to reimagine our participatory governance processes. Not only did several FA board members participate, but also Margarita Del Campo was one of the task force representatives who had put this all into place. Next slide, please. On the next slide, I just listed again so that you don't forget the work that the FA has been doing and is doing on an ongoing basis in the last couple of weeks. And then, as we all know, after negotiations is before negotiations. Somehow the district and the FA teams never run out of topics that we need to address. Brand new on our plate is work that was previously done by the Committee for Non Teaching Compensation, NTCC for short. This committee was composed of four deans, four faculty from senate and FA and chaired by the academic senate president. Most recently, the senate wrote it that they want to discontinue their involvement into this committee because compensation does not belong into 10 plus 1. This is a significant new area of responsibility for the negotiation teams. As the name of the previous committee indicates, this is about compensating non-teaching leadership work. It covers the responsibilities of department chairs, of our athletic coaches, of lab coordinators, and many other important tasks that are fulfilled by faculty members. So stay tuned what we will come up with. Next slide, please. My last slide talks about the follow-up of our last MOU. The FA has promised to sign a letter confirming our shared interest in the fiscal stability of this institution. We would like to include a number of thoughts and ideas over and above just this statement. And for sure, we need to include into our considerations the exciting new things that we learned from the governance May Revis, which we all hope that it is in fact voted into place by the legislature very soon. That is why our letter is still in the works. It might not be ready prior to your special budget study session next week, but I see this also as an advantage. Lindsay Rudi and their team will provide us with an outlook on what we can expect from the May Revis. We can start the discussion and this will be important data and guidance for our upcoming conversations. Thank you again and please feel free to ask any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for the update, Dr. Alzheimer. Anybody have any quick questions? We hope you enjoy your conference and look forward to hearing more about that when you get back. And yes, there's, you're doing so much work in the FA and there's a lot of work to be done. So we really appreciate all the points that you brought up. That brings us to item 7.6, report from board subcommittees. I know that we have a couple of subcommittees that are meeting next week, so I'm not sure if anybody has anything to report out at this time.
Nothing to report. We haven't met since our last board meeting, but I just note that we, I believe everybody has seen, we received the results from the community survey. And the results on first read-through looked very promising, but we'll be having further discussions with our consultant and with the, eventually the entire board about the, about the results. But they look, to me, they looked very promising.
Trustee Garado.
Thank you, Kate. I just wanted to add to the committee relations committee meeting. I didn't catch the speaker's name that spoke. Who was her name? The public comment?
The public comment, the very beginning, Kelly, she has the name.
What was it, Kate?
Catherine Lepay.
Okay, so Ms. Lepay's comments, she really captures the spirit of, and so board members who want to go back and watch the subcommittee's minutes, but what the speaker communicated, that really captures the spirit of what a lot of our community members have been saying to us, both through email and at these community relations meetings. So it's been good to have the panelists to be able to come, but you guys just got to hear, or we all got to hear this public comment now. And she really captures a really wide range of the community right now. So I, I'm hopeful that we, as the foundation, gears up for the spring forward gala that SBCC also moves forward this spring to open up that campus for everyone.
Right. Okay, with that, we'll move to item 7.7, report from interim superintendent president. This is you, Dr. Kindred Maria.
Okay, thank you. Couple of just real quick comments. Congratulations to our classified employees overall. We celebrated that breakfast with everybody and thank you again for your service. We did a resolution prior and I just want to reiterate our thanks to our classified employees. Congratulations to Chelsea Lancaster as the classified employee of the year. Very excited about that and to the honorees that were also incredible employees to provide service to the college and our students and that's really critical. Want to thank Human Resources for the longevity ceremony and we look forward to those in the future. I think that was very nice and really brought home this and Dr. Haslam, thank you because you were relentless about this and right behind you is Kate going, let's get this done. So really appreciate the board's commitment to making sure our employees were honored. Really exciting that tonight we are, well, it's not exciting, but it's exciting in a way because our trustee Diallo is going to be moving into the ASG, the Associated Student Government President, and he's leaving us as student trustee. So I want to thank you for your service. It's been an honor to work with you. Have sincerely appreciated you and all you've done. So once again, thank you and I look forward to working with you next year with Associated Student Government. So that'll be exciting. And again, want to acknowledge Allegra. She, she has dedicated so much time and effort to really helping students learn about vaccinations, COVID. Some of the events that are Associated Student Government sponsored this year were really wonderful and exciting and really want to say thank you for trying to make sure that students feel like they belong at the college. And we hope next year will be more of that and that we will do more to bring our students on campuses. And we hope next year will be more of that and that we will do more to bring our students on campuses and serve them. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the Consent Agenda, item 8.1. Are there any items? So we're, the consent agenda is including all items in section nine, 10, and 11. Were there any items that needed to be pulled, trustee Croninger?
I have questions around 10.1 and 11.1.
10.1 and 11.1. And 11.1. All right, we'll pull those. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Kate, I want to pull 11.5.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for shouting at me, trustee Garado.
I don't know how loud it is.
We're pulling 10.1, 11.1, and 11.5. Trustee Everett, does your, your motion still stand?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay, trustee Abud is the second on that and we will do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And we will move to the items that were polled. First up was item 10.1, An Annual Review and Approval of Instructional Materials and Field Trip Fees, 2021-2022. Trustee Croninger.
My question here was just, do we have resources that are available to students who cannot afford these fees? Are most disadvantaged students, I'm thinking particularly of geology trips and some of the things that are more expensive.
I'm going to look at Executive Vice President Kathy Scott to answer that.
Thank you, Dr. Maria. Yes, with some of the, the field trips, which are a little pricey, we do have scholarships available to help students. And with the fees generally across the board, in some cases, financial aid does help to pay for them. That's not, that's not true for the California Promise, which had been the bog waiver. That only pays the tuition fees. But students who have other types of financial aid can often get these, these materials fees paid for through, through those sources. And also EOPS does help the EOPS students with some of these as well. And I believe that Paloma's in the audience and she might be able to answer if you have additional questions. But yes, we do find ways to help students who need assistance.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And then I had a request regarding 11.1.
Before we move to 11.1, student trustee Diallo had a comment to make on that.
Just to buttress trustee Croninger's question about providing funding for other students who may not be eligible for, you know, statewide financial aid or promise. Like, is there also a way for them to get some sort of support or financial assistance towards this? Like mostly international students, I would say, because those are the only ones who are not eligible for statewide financial aid. And they may be in most of these classes. And they're not, they can't be able to get either the promise or any other state financial aid. So is there some kind of assistance for them also?
True, nor that would be assistance from the institution itself. You're right, it wouldn't be state aid and it wouldn't be EOPS. I really would need to defer to Corolla and perhaps Paloma on, on how we could support the international students. But I do know that we have helped international students with, with items like this. We've been able to find the, find the funds or work with the foundation. So I really can't answer it beyond that unless someone here can, can do so.
We'll, we'll check in with Corolla and Paloma and get your answer in our next meeting.
That brings us to, we'll just go ahead and hear everything before we do a vote. So 11.1.
With 11.1, I just had a request and this is a request I have consistently made with the contracts with lawyers. And that is that we do not have separate charges of 25 cents a page for faxes and for copying. We all know that it doesn't cost 25 cents a page to copy something. And it's a profit center. So Griffith and Thornburg agreed that it would just not be a separate part of the contract. I would ask if they could agree as well.
Okay, thank you. We will follow up.
And then the last pulled item was 11.5, Approval of Independent Contractor Lumos Transforms.
Yes, thank you. My first question, Kindred, would this be lumostransforms.com?
I'm sorry?
Would, would this be lumostransforms.com?
I believe so, but I'm going to look to Vice President Scott to answer regarding Lumos. This is for the ally facilitator, Dr. Scott.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Maria. Yes, this is for the ally training that's, that's going on right now. And actually, I am here at this ally training. And it is, I'm sorry, what specifically was your question, trustee Garado?
I appreciate it, Dr. Scott. I didn't have a question yet. First, I wanted to make sure that I researched the right folks, which was lumostransforms.com, and you answered that. That was correct. Can, can you just tell us more about, there's definitely more on the website, but on our attachment, it talks about some anti-oppression something. And can you just tell us more exactly what we're buying here?
Sure. And this was funded with Title III and Title V money. So that's, those are grants that we get for being an HSI institution, Hispanic-serving institution. This particular training, it's associated with the Ally, which is the Affective Learning Institute, which has been involved in many different types of equity training. This particular one is involved with trauma-informed pedagogy, strengthening the balance between trauma-informed pedagogy and self-care. It's currently still going on, so I can't answer all of your questions. But it's really looking at certain elements and principles that are involved in looking at the trauma that many of our students come to us with. Concerns for their safety and the safety too of our employees and our faculty. Making sure that our faculty have peer support and that our institution is run in a trustworthy and transparent manner. That we have cultural humility, that we are, that we acknowledge that equity training is a lifelong, a lifelong journey, really. It's a journey and that we're continually learning. And for us to be better at collaboration and mutual, mutual interests and working together. And to ensure that everybody, with each of our constituency groups and our students, have voice and choice and self-agency. We've also talked about organizational cultural transformation and just looking at how we can ensure that we have not only equitable outcomes, but that we have equitable processes as we work towards greater equity for our students and for our institution as a whole.
Awesome. So then this 518, 519, you guys are there right now doing this, right? So we're just kind of attractively approving this because you're actually getting the service right now?
Yes. Yes, and I do, I, I do apologize for that. I would need to go back and find out exactly why the paperwork was a little bit delayed. But yeah, it is going on now. I have to say it's been an extremely positive experience for those who are here. There's, there's quite a big, quite a large group and it's been, people have really appreciated being together in this type of professional development opportunity and seeing each other in person. And it's been, it's been an extremely positive experience.
Awesome. Where exactly are you guys at right now?
We are in Avila Beach.
Oh, just down the way. Okay, so then that's the, that's the three-hour faculty retreat workshops, so.
Three-day.
Oh, three-day, right here it says three-hour. So it's, it's a three-day instead of a three-hour.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you for, for sharing all that. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. What is the preference of the board? Would you like me to call each item separately for a vote? Or shall I do all three of those items together?
Together is fine.
Trustee Garado, do you have any preference?
No, we would just have to make that little amendment where it says format so that it's three-day faculty retreat workshop instead of a three-hour, because the cost to hour ratio is going to be way off compared to the three days starting.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead. And do I have a motion to approve item 10.1, The Annual Review and Approval of Instructional Materials and Field Trip Fees? 11.1, Approval of Contract for Legal Services, LaZano Smith. And 11.5, Approval of Independent Contractor Lumos Transforms.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Hasland.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Everett, and we will do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Aye. Yes.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We move on now to Section 12, Action Items with 12.1, Equal Employment Opportunity Fund Multiple Method Allocation Model Certification Form. Woo-hoo, fiscal year 2021-2022. Dr. Maria.
Yes, we're here to answer any questions. And Michael, do you have any comments you want to make?
Good evening, trustees. This is a standard item that you'll see every year to allow us to gain our EO funds that we use for equity training and other EO-related items. We are able to happily say that we are doing eight of the nine. The, the ninth one has been a challenge for almost all districts, and that's to incorporate DEI principles into evaluation processes because those are negotiable. You may know that there's some pending legislation to potentially require us to do that, but that hasn't passed yet.
Okay, any questions for members? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
A second.
Okay, and we will do a roll call vote on item 12.1.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Bringing us to item 12.2, Classification, Revised Vice President's School of Extended Learning Job Description. Dr. Maria?
Yes, I'm happy to talk about this. As I've been doing the vice president positions and revising them, I revised the job descriptions. Our job descriptions were a little dated. And so one of the things we are doing as we do our work is to include equity focused in our job descriptions and make sure we try to take out some of the deficit language, such as things like under the supervision or under the direction of the president, which is deficit language. We say things like reports directly to the superintendent president. And I'm really pleased with some of the work we've been doing on this. I think the School of Extended Learning, we really needed to say things like foster an inclusive learning environment through equity-minded teaching and learning. So these are the kinds of changes we're making. We're also with the principles of equity, diversity, and inclusion. We have lessened our minimum calls and then sort of put everything into desired qualifications so that we can screen people into the process and then hire the best person. So that's going along with all the changes we're making in hiring. And Michael, if you'd like to add to that, because I'm like really trying to get these job descriptions rewritten and before you.
Yeah, no, Dr. Maria is correct. A lot of our position descriptions are ancient. And she has added a significant amount of value, bringing her DEI experience and her lens to those job descriptions. So we really appreciate it.
We're asking for your approval and then we will go to recruitment.
Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, can, oh, there is one, trustee Everett.
Oh, yes. Well, I just wanted to say that I, I appreciate Dr. Maria and, and the team's work on updating the language because rhetoric and words matter. And I do think as people read job descriptions, they get a sense of what's going to be expected of them and what the climate and what the culture of an institution is. So I really appreciate that and really supportive of this.
Thank you. We, we appreciate it. I think Human Resources and my office have been working really hard to implement equitable practices. So we're pretty excited.
All right, trustee Garado. We, I think you need to unmute. Oh, were you just?
Thank you, Kate. Yeah, it was, I don't know what happened. Thank you. Kindred, right above physical demands and working environments, the second to the last bullet, developing partnerships with business industry. Under Melissa, this was something she naturally did. And so is this was included to now because she naturally expanded the scope of that position based on the work she did. And with the naming opportunity that she helped to cultivate and ultimately went to the foundation, is that where the alternate funding resources is coming in? And I'm wondering, would this person then need to have a bit of fundraising background to accomplish that? Or is that something that this person would have the support of if possible? And I don't know if they have time, the foundation. And just can you tell me more about that? Just when I read that, I knew that Melissa created that job naturally because of who she was. And that really wasn't a part of what this job entailed in the past.
So you're asking about the bullet point that says developing partnerships with business industry, education, and the community.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a good one. I just, I'm wondering how that will fit because I'm wondering if they need to have prerequisite, there's some prerequisite skills to be able to do that.
Well, we actually asked, it's under knowledge and abilities, that background should be evidenced by recent and proven experience, knowledge, and abilities in that particular area. So it's something that we will be looking for. We will, we do not always get everything we ask for on knowledge and abilities. And so our hope will be that we get somebody like that. And if we don't, we will make sure we develop them because that is also our job, is to grow leaders.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the, this motion.
12.2. Right, thank you. And a second from trustee Croninger, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We're at 12.3, Vice President's Salary Adjustment. Dr. Maria?
Yes, as some of you may know or not know, the vice president's contracts do not include a me-too clause. And so we have to bring to you a separate item for any raises that they would receive. And so we are requesting your approval on what we gave our other classifications in the way of a salary increase, although I do note that two of our vice presidents are not on contracts. They are hired under the classified provisions in Title V and Education Code. So I'm requesting that you approve this to ensure that our vice presidents also receive what the bargaining units received.
Trustee Haslam?
I move approval.
A second.
Questions? Trustee Garado.
Thanks, Kate. What, what two vice presidents under a different class, Kindred?
Vice President Shanahan and Vice President Moss are under, they were hired without contracts. They were hired under as classified employees. So that's, I just like to make sure that you're very clear when I say it's not in the in the contracts.
Okay, I, well, I think that's good that you pointed out because it does seem, and and this clears up the conflict of interest, it would seem like a conflict of interest when you have vice presidents at the table negotiating and then they negotiate and turn their own me too, right?
Yes, and that's why I'm making the recommendation to the board to give these salary increases. Because in most districts I've worked in, I usually meet and confer with the administrators and the VPs to do their salary increases. And here it has always been a me too in your past history. So I'm making sure that we, we give our VPs the same salary increases we gave our employees. If you look at our competitive salaries, we are not competitive. And so we need to make sure that we treat our VPs with the same respect we we treat our employees. And they've worked really hard this last year, two years. I wasn't here prior, but anybody that's been around for COVID has worked hard.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, we will move to a roll call vote. Yes. Did you, did you get the, who made the motion? And it was, it was moved by trustee Hasland. It was seconded by, I believe, trustee Miller. And we will now call.
I.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Yes.
I.
It passes unanimously and trustee Gaird, did you want to jump back in?
Yeah, I wanted to know now that we passed it, Kindred, will this be updated on the ad join so that the new salary is reflective? I know we already interviewing, but just so that it, you know, the higher salary can at least be posted.
Yeah, we'll update the salary schedule now that you've approved it. Human resources will follow up and then whoever hopefully we hire will be offered the new salary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to reports and information, item 3.1, monthly budget update as of April 30th, 2022. And Ms. Moss is here to, are we, do you have a presentation or just questions? All right.
I I can say two things if you want.
Would you like to say some things?
Yes. Evening. So you don't have to read every single page to find the two things that are interesting. Just to note, our, all of us who live in the finance world and the fiscal services team, we've officially entered the time period where we're working in two fiscal years. We're working in this year, trying to wrap things up, looking at next year. So very busy time of the year for us. In terms of our monthly budget update that's before the board tonight, a couple notable changes are that we did put into the adjustments of our budget, the items we discussed last time, which are the changes to the international tuition revenue and the out of state tuition revenue, those adjustments based on the actuals for this year. So those have been built in. And then we have a note under our assumptions that of course we have completed the negotiations for the salary increases. Those are not in here just yet because we completed them well after April, but they will be entered in this month of May. So you'll see those adjustments coming next time. That was all I wanted to highlight.
All right. Trustee Croninger.
So just to clarify what you just mentioned. The, the update on our non-resident students is in the budget. But what we talked about last time is that that reduces the amount of her funds, so it's a wash ultimately. So is that the way you're treating it in the budget?
That's right.
Because the assumption still lacks a number.
Yes, if you go onto page five of the PDF, you can see exactly what you just described under the details of the revenue budget changes. You see the increase and then the decrease from her if and they not that out.
Yeah, I was just looking at the assumptions where it says we'll still be doing it. So.
Yes, it's it's complete.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions before we let Vice President Moss leave the podium?
You mentioned that there was an uptick in, I think you said an uptick in international student revenues. Where do I find that?
Okay, so probably the easiest place to look at it is on page five because the dollar amounts are right there in the middle of the page, just above the box.
And which which page?
Page five. Let me know if you see it there. The revenue budget changes. Those are the dollar amounts of how much we're expecting based on the actuals to end at the end of the year. That's an increase from our adopted budget.
But because we're claiming HERF money for lost revenue, there's a decrease as well. And they wa, and they zero out is what it comes down to.
And then that effect.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah.
So there's a decrease in HERF transfer for lost revenue. Which equals the increase in non-resident tuition.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no further questions, we are going to move to item 13.2, library hours and usage. Dr. Mario.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to look to Dr. Scott. She's going to give you a presentation along with our faculty member, Ellen Carey.
Thank you, Dr. Mario, and I'm going to wait until Ellen is let into the room so she can.
Right, thank you.
Here. Okay. Okay, great. And Orin, I don't know if you can put our slides up here.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, just leave it there for right now. Okay, good evening again, trustees. This item about the library is on the board agenda tonight at the request of the board. And I believe it was trustee Croninger who asked for this and our superintendent president. As you are aware, the library is a critical space on campus. It serves an important equity function that some people may not fully understand. And I would appreciate you just giving me a minute here to explain this because it really is very interesting and very telling. Many of our students go into the library and they ask every possible question you can imagine. And I got some of them from our librarians last night. And it's everything from where do I get a textbook? Where is my class? Do you know where my instructor's office is? How do I register? My essay is due tomorrow and I don't understand the assignment. Can you help me? So it's just, it's a place where students feel comfortable. And it's just, it's really an equity space. And I don't, I don't know that people always really understand that. It is important that we serve students both in person and online. And that as the campus continues to open more and more, that the library in-person hours serve our students. As Allegra pointed out, needs to happen and other students have also pointed it out to us in recent months. Jens Kuhn and Sally Chua. Jens is the, there's a dean over the area and Sally is the department chair of the library. And Ellen Carey, who's here with me tonight, she's one of our fabulous librarians. They were the ones that put these slides together and they spent a significant amount of time doing it so that you could really see the data. And I'm very appreciative, appreciative to them. And I also wanted to mention that Sally took the time to meet with our ASG president to fully understand her concerns. And I'm, I'm really grateful to the library, the faculty and staff because they've done everything they could to really be responsive to the needs of students, even when they were having some staffing issues. And I would also like to thank CSEA and Liz for her leadership and helping to make, help us make some changes to make sure that we're serving our students' needs. As you will see in this presentation, the librarians and the library staff collect and use a significant amount of data to make decisions. And we value their analysis of that of the data and their expertise generally. So thank you for letting me give that little brief introduction and next slide, please. And Ellen will, we'll talk about that one.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to present some of what the library has been doing both before, during, and hopefully someday after the pandemic to serve students and the rest of the campus. So I'm not going to read through all of this. You can look at these yourselves. But I thought it was useful to distinguish between the services we offer in person and online because I know the online ones are not necessarily as apparent when looking at things like the the library space open hours. But I do want to make a few points. We were in the fortunate position as a library when the the pandemic hit in that we already offered most of our services online. With some significant exceptions, like e-reserve textbooks, that was new for us. But we offered an online chat service. We offered a whole bunch of videos and tutorials and research guides that were online asynchronous instructional tools. So it was not new for us to have to learn to to use that modality. But we did change a lot of the the proportions of what we did and the ways that we did it and and developed some new tools, for example, canvas modules for research and information literacy instruction that we hadn't used before. We also began cataloging and checking out technology, including managing curbside pickup when the the building was closed. So we were instrumental, if I can say so myself, in providing hotspots and Chromebooks to students, both credit and non-credit students on campus throughout the pandemic, and we're still doing that. We also, as I mentioned, created an e-reserve system for temporary online access to textbooks. And in doing so, our our total textbook checkouts, counting both the physical checkouts when, now that we're back partially in person and the reserve checkout has increased by 10%. So that shows a need for having textbooks in that modality. That is, by the way, an issue moving forward. We're sort of in a gray area perhaps or around copyright law. And we're going to need to figure out how to manage providing both physical and online reserves going forward, which to comply with copyright laws requires both staff and and money to do that. So we're like every place on campus, we've been grappling with how to manage these these two modalities. Both individually and together. We subscribed to better tools for offering our online chat and booking appointments with a librarian. So that's something we've, we've improved our ability to do. We've shifted a lot of our collection development practices to really emphasize eBooks so that they will be available to a broader range of students, both, both students who are taking face to face and online classes. And we've provided synchronous online research workshops for the first time. In the past, it was all asynchronous instruction online. And the only synchronous instruction that we did was face to face. And now we've been doing Zoom workshops and things like that. So we've, we've also seen a dramatic use, increase in use in some of our online asynchronous tools, like the research workshops. We've actually, that their use has doubled from fall of 2019 to this past fall, 2021, from 11, a little over 11,000 sessions using those, those research guides to over 23,000 in fall of 2021. And so I think Kathy has the next slide. We're going to talk some about the hours, both before the pandemic and more recently.
Thanks, Ellen. This, this slide is designed to give us some context as to what the hours had been prior to COVID. So this is 2019 through March of 2020, which is when COVID hit. We were open 82.5 hours per week, which is very significant. And we were open from fairly early in the morning until quite late at night. Through Thursday, we had Friday hours until four. We were open on Saturday, quite a few hours, and then Sunday, quite a few hours. And it's important to point out also that during that time, we had five full-time librarians and four full-time staff members. Thank you, just for context purposes. Thanks. And next slide, please.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk about some of our rationale for how we've managed the combination of online and face to face hours since we came back to campus last fall. And to preface it, I want to say that our goal has always been before the pandemic, during the pandemic. And as we move forward, it has always been and continues to be to open the physical library as well as to provide all of our online services for as many hours as we possibly can in order to serve as many students as possible in all modalities. And, and we look very carefully at student demand and need both for the types of services we offer and for when we we offer those services. We do that in both formal and informal ways. At the beginning of the semester last fall, we had a whiteboard at the entrance to the office that asked students what their primary reason for being there was, whether it was to print or get research help or whatever, so we could learn more about what their needs were. We would love to be open 24/7. That's a request that we regularly get from students. Over the years, we've regularly had the ASG and just also individual students requesting that we be open 24/7, like some university libraries are. We wish we had the kind of resources to offer that extensive number of hours, but that's unlikely to be the case. So as I said, we've tried to determine our hours based on on the need. And we have some slides coming up that are going to demonstrate sort of how that need has changed over the time. But just looking at this one, you can see that even with fewer faculty and staff, we were able to go from 17 hours last fall in person to 30 hours in person this spring. And then if you go to the next slide, this is our hope for the fall that we'll be able to open 63 hours. That would be both in person and online, the same hours, which is what we've done in the past. This is assuming that our fourth staff position is filled and that we have enough funding for part-time faculty. We this spring, we were not open any weekend hours, and that's something we really want to include again. More on why we made that decision a little bit later. But first, we have several slides that illustrate the use of the library space in in two sorts of ways. One is our gate count, which is we have a people counter at the entrance to the library that just counts the number of entrances into the building. And we've, the way Dr. Scott's going to go through those slides, but the way it's presented is is an average rate by hour. And then I have some slides to present on the actual headcount, how many people are in the library at any given time. So next slide.
Okay, thanks, Ellen. This again is designed to provide the context prior to COVID. This is fall of 19, the library gate count, when we were open 82.5 hours per week. And you can see that the numbers hover around the 200, 300 mark for most of our weekdays, particularly certain days, which which Ellen will point out in a minute. But you can see that we're really hundreds of people in the library at any given point during the busiest days. And you can see that the dates down there below. Next slide, please. And here you see what's happened during COVID. So fall of 21, we've gone from hundreds down to below 50. And sometimes significantly below 50. So this is we here and it also, I mean, of course, we're only open 17 hours per week during that fall semester. We were still really trying to come back at that point and, and you can see the really low usage. Although we did try to be open during the the times when students most wanted to be there. Okay, next slide, please. And and here's the spring 2022, which is our current semester that we just completed. And here's the spring 2022, which is our current semester that we just completed. And you can see that we're still struggling to come back. We were, we almost doubled the in-person hours. And students toward the end of the semester were coming back, and we're getting about to the 50/50 mark, something like that. But it's still significantly short of where we had been when we were at the 200 and 300 mark or higher as a regular practice. Okay, next slide, please. And Ellen's going to take these.
Yeah, so the next several slides, the blue bars are the maximum number of people in the hour, in the library at a given time. So this is the daily maximum. The blue line at the bottom is the daily minimum for that particular day. And then the red line in the middle, the thicker red line, is the average headcount. So we haven't done headcount in the past. Our gate count is just per day. So we didn't have a way of knowing other than just observe, observation, what times of day were the busiest. We could average the total number of open hours and the gate count for that day. We could get an average hourly rate, but we didn't know definitively which hours were the most busy. There certainly were times pre-pandemic, and especially many years ago at the height of SBCC enrollment, when we had hundreds of students in the library at any given time and a gate count of 4,000 or 5,000 a day, you know? And that had started to decline a little bit before the pandemic, but it was still a very, one of the busiest, most active places on campus. So on this slide, you'll see the dips that you see are Sunday. And if you move to the next slide, I'll show you that by time of day. So the library headcount, by time of day, this is the average across all days of the week. But you can see that the library tends to have the most people in it in the early afternoon hours. And if you go to the next slide, you can see by day of the week, so this was for fall 2021, when we did have that Sunday. And we found that it was, the number of people in the library at any given time was so much lower on Sunday that we wanted to use our resources to provide hours during the week when it was likely to be, there was likely to be more demand for the library being open. As I said before, we really, a lot of community college libraries in California are not able to provide weekend hours, and we've really prided ourselves on the fact that we have been able to, and we do hope to do that in the future. But this was a decision we made this year based on these numbers. Now, if you look at the next slide, this is the daily maximum average and minimum headcount by day for the spring semester. So you can just see a dramatic jump when we went back to classes after we had that first month period of face-to-face classes being in the online modality because of the COVID surge. So you can see there's, it's increased both from earlier in the spring, but also definitely increased from last fall. So I don't have the breakout for specific days of the week. We were open also more days of the week. We're open Monday through Thursday in the spring, so four days total instead of just three. And if you look at the next slide, please, thank you. You can see that there is still, our busiest times were in the early afternoon, middle of the day. We did also open until six more consistently in the spring. We only did that at the very end of the semester in the fall, but in the spring, we were able to be open every Wednesday until six. But again, we're trying to make all of our decisions about open hours based on this kind of demand. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is a little confusing perhaps, but it shows the online and face-to-face interactions between librarians and library patrons. So it doesn't distinguish between students or employees or community members, but the vast majority of the library patrons are students. These, the online interactions, so what you see in green, include library chats, inquiries by email or text message, questions submitted through our website. We have a ticket system on the website where people can ask an appointment, ask a question, and one-on-one appointments scheduled with a librarian. The face-to-face interactions include students coming to the reference and information desk for help, whether that's research questions, technology support, some of the questions that Dr. Scott mentioned at the beginning, what are the bookstore's hours and how do I register for a class? So both things that are specifically related to the library and things that are not. But I want to point out that these interactions do not include the formal research and information literacy instruction that we've designed for classes or for other groups. And they also don't reflect asynchronous engagement with our online resources or instructional tools, like the videos or research guides that I mentioned before. Next slide, please. We're almost done. This is the second to last slide. So this is our, just to demonstrate how many students we've reached through formal course-based research instruction. Prior to the pandemic, this was done primarily through visiting a classroom, you know, one session of an English class or three sessions of an English class that semester, and providing instruction in that way. But specifically course-based. You can see that the year, that in spring of 2020, when we, when the pandemic hit and we started to go online, there was a combination of both face-to-face and online-only instruction. So that took the form of workshops on Zoom, personalized videos created specifically for that class, as well as more active instruction embedded into research guides, like videos and tutorials and things like that. We were still working on the statistics for this year, but this year also, it will be a combination of face-to-face and online instruction because we were back in the classroom, teaching some research workshops face-to-face as well as providing both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And I also want to make one last point about this that's been an interesting challenge for us during the pandemic, which is though we've really expanded the ways that we provide research and information literacy instruction online, including creating Canvas modules, it also makes it harder to track in some ways because if we go to a classroom for an English 110 class, then that's really obvious that those students have gotten the benefit of our instruction. If we work with an English 110 professor and create a research guide in a Canvas module and videos one semester, we don't necessarily know for sure whether they're using that in subsequent semesters, so it doesn't get tracked in our statistics. So it's likely that there's a lot more use of some of those tools than we even realize, and we're still grappling with how we can better track that when we sort of release those things into the wild and share them on the Canvas comments and things like that. And last slide, please.
Okay, thanks, Ellen. You did a great job showing all those statistics. This is a repeated slide. We just wanted to again reiterate the library hours that we're planning on for fall. We will, we will be open approximately 63 hours a week, as you can see there. And we will be open in the evening until nine. So from nine in the morning until nine at night. We're not sure about Friday, probably online because the demand is quite low. And Sunday will be open from one to nine. And I did want to say that we will be evaluating these hours and whether or not this is working in the fall semester. We don't know what the future of the library was going to look like post-pandemic and whether or not, you know, the students will return in the hundreds that they, where they were prior to the pandemic. We just don't know that. And we are down full-time librarians. We did have five a couple of years ago. We lost a couple to the SERP. We are down in staff currently, although we are in the process of filling those positions. And so that, we've almost, one will be on the next board agenda, and so we'll be at four. But I did also want to just say that I've been talking to Jeff Green, and the foundation used to fund a library resident, which was a recent MLIS graduate, which is the master's in library and information science. We would host somebody to work at our library for 25 hours a week, and that was funded through this program. And Jeff Green and the foundation are going to return that to the library starting in fall. So that will give us another librarian to help, and that will be, I know that Ellen was excited when I told her, and Sally will be thrilled, so we're really happy about that. And we believe that we're meeting the needs of the campus. We're reopening more to meet the needs, and we will continue to follow the statistics and make the decisions based on what is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board members, trustee Miller?
I really appreciated that. Excuse me, I really appreciated your presentation. It really educated me on ways that the library, how important the library is. And I think one takeaway I have from it is it sounds to me like the library is very important to student success, that students are coming there to get help. And when a student comes to get help, we need to be able to help them. So I'm hoping that we can continue to provide and perhaps expand the resources that are available to the library. Thank you.
Trustee Yala.
Yeah, I also want to say a big thank you to the librarians for taking our concerns into consideration. And you also have to bear with us because, you know, sometimes we just go to the department and say, you need to extend your time to forever, don't close. And without knowing everything they're going through, like wanting more staff and things like that. But once we get all the information, I mean, with still students, we just want you to take care of us. We don't care sometimes what you're going through. But it's a learning process for us, and this looked promising for the next semester because, as I said, because of COVID, there have been a drop of students coming in, mostly because most of them can't even get to campus because of the vaccine and mask mandate. But I'm sure once everything goes away, we'll have, definitely have more students come into the library. And we'll also try our best to market the library because there's still a lot of students who doesn't know that they have these resources that they can take advantage of. So by maybe partnering with the LRC, the library, hosting events next to them from the ASG angle, it can also increase awareness that this space is available on campus, that they can be able to use. So we look forward to that next year.
Trustee Gallardo and then trustee Everett.
Thanks, Kate. I have two things. The first, if you could, please, Kathy, Ellen, talk about the scope of services being provided in Spanish.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's something we are trying to increase. Many, actually, I shouldn't even say many. Some of our research guide pages and some of our webpages are provided in Spanish as well as in English. We have not had a completely fluent Spanish speaker on the library faculty or staff until now. But now with Julio Martinez coming from the LRC into the library, we're delighted to have him with us for many reasons. And one is that he speaks Spanish fluently. So both in terms of having the online resources available in Spanish and then also having staff who can speak to library patrons in Spanish, it's something that's important to us, and we're not there, we're not where we want to be yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, so my second, Kindred, then this just helps frame. So that, thank you, Ellen, for being honest. And it's disappointing to hear that we are a Hispanic-serving institution, Kindred, and we receive millions of dollars in grants. And so, Kindred, my direction and recommendation would be that this is not something that we need to rely on the foundation to fund a position. Our community deserves this. And so many people on this campus have so articulately come to the podium and spoken about how much they know of the student population we serve. And so to learn that the library is not open seven days a week at every hour that we possibly can, knowing that we take in millions and millions of dollars for this population is something, Kindred, that I'd like to see change immediately. And I don't want us to wait to some donor or something, which our community is fantastic, and the philanthropic support we get is amazing. I do think the library needs to open all day long, seven to midnight if we can. Saturday and Sunday, our students, the library, is such a place of peace where they can go at all different hours. If you get off of work really late and you're living in a house with multi-generational families, you need a quiet place. And so for so many first-gen kids at UCSB, that's where we went. We went to the library. I know city council just recently entered into, with the city and the renovation, and many people there shared, I think Alejandra shared, that's where she went. That was her safe space, the library downtown. So, Kindred, I really like this. If you could come back with us with a plan, I just think this is unacceptable for the community, that we're a Hispanic-serving institution. We don't have services that are expensive, that are being provided in Spanish, and that our library is an open seven days a week, 12 hours, 13, 15 hours a day. So I really like more information on that, and I'd like us to move forward as quickly as possible because that's critical to student success, as Robert mentioned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, trustee Gallardo. Trustee Everett?
Yes, thank you, President Parker. I want to echo what trustee Miller was saying about how this was a very good learning exercise for us in terms of really appreciating what the library is signifying. And I wanted to also mention what student trustee Yala was saying about they're going to market the library hours. Because when I heard that the, that there's a desire to, you know, keep this up depending on watching how the students utilize the library, I also want to mention that we are emerging out of a pandemic, sort of. We may have to go back in, we don't know. But I do want to encourage trustee Yala, when you become AS president, to really emphasize to students how we fought to get these hours, so please go, right? And then also for, you know, for the staff and for us to recognize that it may take a while for the students to utilize it, you know, given all the kinds of challenges that they've been having in their lives. So I'm really excited about the response that we've had. And I just look forward to us really, you know, taking advantage of where we've come, supporting the efforts that we've made. And, you know, I was really heartened to see those numbers slowly creeping up because we, you know, our lives are changing slowly, and, you know, we have to kind of deal with it in real time. So just thank you.
Trustee Krenninger. I'd like to add my thanks to all of the people in the library staff and the administration and CSEA and everyone who worked together to make this happen. That's number one. Number two, I think the work of the library is tremendously important. I've been impressed with it right from the start, and I don't remember the exact name, but I remember well a ceremony where the library was awarded a, I believe, a national recognition for excellence, our library in particular, a few years back. And while we're on this subject, rather than the direction that trustee Gallardo took, I think that we have to think about these things in the context of the larger budget and the resources available to us. We don't just pick one subject and say, well, let's drill down on that until we understand what all the subjects are. So, and all the issues are. So from my point of view, I think the library deserves to be on our list of things to talk about for where we want to direct special resources to. I think we need to understand what might be most useful to you in many respects. For example, I don't have a good grasp of the resources you might need for for, for the kinds of things that students want from the library. If they come to you for looking for a book or an article or research that you don't happen to have in our library, do you have the resources to get that? Do you have the agreements with other libraries to borrow it? That aspect of how the library functions, I think, is part of, it's not just the hours, though that's tremendously important, it's your resources that you can offer. So those are my comments. I think I really appreciate your work. I really think you're an important part of this college, almost the campus center in many respects. And I think you should be on our things to discuss for resources, but not just as an isolated item.
Trustee Haslam?
It should be obvious to students that the library is there for them as a resource for research and also as a place to go just to find some peace and quiet to study. I said it should be obvious. It isn't. I think students sort of look at that building, and if they are familiar with it, they will go in. But if they haven't made that first trip, the chances are really good that it's going to be ignored in preference for getting off campus and going to work or something else. What I'm trying to suggest is that we should think about a a program, and I think trustee Everett said something similar to this, whereby we market, we advertise, we encourage. A long time ago, the library would come to classes and actually present to classes of students in a very short presentation. I mean, sometimes the chance of talking to students got away from them, and they sort of expanded and took too much time. But I think a short presentation in classes can often persuade students that this library is unique. And over time, it has really become unique and has attracted a large number of students. So my advice, unsolicited, but nevertheless there, is to engage in a marketing program to help students understand just why they should be going to the library.
And it was trustee Diallo who said the marketing, right?
Trustee Abud?
I just agree with what Veronica said. I think the Spanish is a core function we should have. And the longer it's open, the better. It's a safe place with no drugs and alcohol and time to focus on school and not some other things that you might focusing on. I used to be at the library all the time. It's the one, and yeah, you live in a multi-generational or 15 students in a house, can't really study. So even if it's not that many people there, I think it should still be open.
And I will just chime in with a few things. One, I completely agree with trustee Gallardo and trustee Abud that this is an equity issue in terms of access. And I also agree with trustee Croninger that it's, you know, you have to look at it holistically. So I think in terms of the hours, that is something that we should absolutely look at, and be looking at through a DEI lens. And collection development is another piece of this, of course. And thinking about not just for credit students, but our non-credit students as well, our students who are English learners, what is available for them in the library collection? And how are they encouraged and told about the library? Because it's, you know, that's not something that I've typically seen. And as a former SPPC adjunct librarian, I will ask, how is your adjunct librarian pool right now?
We have, so right now, we have one part-time librarian who's been with us throughout the pandemic. And she's been the librarian who, even prior to the pandemic, had the broadest range of roles, including teaching research workshops. Many of our other part-time librarians were comfortable providing instruction and support at the reference desk, but not necessarily teaching a workshop. And we would love to expand that pool. And part of your, the answer to your question is, we don't know because we haven't, we haven't had the resources or also when we were, you know, not open for face-to-face at all, we didn't have the need to find out who might be available or not still as part-timers. So that's something, as we're coming out of the pandemic, hopefully, that is also on our radar, reaching out to former part-time librarians in the area to see if they're still interested in picking up hours. Yeah, not to get too detailed about this, but we've had a range of sort of models for how we've staffed the library in the past, prior to the pandemic, usually with some combination of people who are there regularly for anywhere from four to more hours a week to people who might work only one Sunday during a semester or serve as a sub if another part-time librarian is out sick or something like that.
Well, I hope that that can get more normalized as we come out of the pandemic. And the, I love the marketing comments from trustee Diallo and from others here, trustee Everett, trustee Haslam. I do think that as, when a culture shifts the way it has during the pandemic, that it takes work to get it maybe even better than it was before. I think it's totally a possibility. I think it'll make a difference, frankly, if the cafe is be able to reopen. But I know that this is a national and global issue for academic librarians, and I'm sure that professional groups are talking about special programming at the start of the year, collaborating with faculty, things like that. And I really am looking forward to seeing what our library staff come up with. And I'm looking forward to a really vibrant library scene in the fall. And anything that we can do to help, just let us know. Thank you. And with that, I think that we are through with item 13.2, which brings us to item 13.3, governor's budget may revise. Dr. Maria?
Vice President Moss is going to present what the May revise looks like. And then next week, we will have a finance and audit committee meeting where we'll go over what the impacts are to the college. And then we have a study session next Thursday where we'll go over that same information with the entire board.
Thank you, Dr. Maria. You stole my thunder. We're in sync, as always. Okay, so I do want to explain a little bit more tonight about what we're going to talk about right now. So it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, just because of timing and these excellent plans to go into the details on our budget next week. So last Friday, as we were all busy posting the agenda items for this meeting tonight, was when the May revise was announced. So what is attached to your agenda right now is the full state budget, 400 pages long, very detailed, not so specific about our community college budgets. It was after we published our board agenda that the May revise joint analysis came out, looks like this. This is what we are used to studying and going through in great detail because this is specific to the California Community College system. So this, I apologize, was not attached, but we can attach it after tonight. It's out there. You can find it on the web or wait for us to attach it for you. This document provides all the details, like I said, about California community colleges. Plus, we have lots of webinars, conferences that we've been attending this week to try and understand what the information is in here. Okay? So bear with me, there's a lot of details in here, and I have many of them in my mind floating around, wanting to explain to you. Stop me anywhere as I go. With this all being hot off the presses, I don't have any formal presentation or whatnot. So I apologize for that. All the specifics of how this impacts our budget will be coming to the board next week on Monday in the finance and audit subcommittee, and then in the study session. So we're just going to talk tonight about the high level of what's in the budget itself, from the state, at the state level. Okay? Okay, so, and I'm sure many of you have studied this already and are well on your way to becoming experts about it. I'm sure you saw that from the January governor's proposed budget to May, there were a lot of increases, a lot of increases in allocations. At the state level, we're looking at having much larger-than-expected revenues coming into the state, which means a very large surplus, largest in the history of the state of California on the revenue side. So that's, that's big and exciting news. However, you know, with, with all of that funding comes the tough decision that the governor has to make of how much of it is ongoing versus one-time funding that comes to various governmental organizations that require that funding. For us, we're funded on Prop 98. And Prop 98 provides about 10.93% of their funding comes to California community colleges. And we're looking at receiving $4.2 billion of an increase in Prop 98 funding for next year compared to this year. So very large increase, $4.2 billion. But of that, $1.3 billion is ongoing, whereas 2.9 is one-time. So most of it is going to one-time funding, and that's due to the volatility that the state is seeing in the revenues coming in. They're knowing that, you know, this was an unusual year, very large revenues, and not wanting to allocate too much of that funding to ongoing funding. Okay? I'll get into the specifics of exactly what that funding is in just a moment. I want to share a little bit more high level about the state budget first. So each year, some of you may recall, we do something called approving the GAN limit, the GAN appropriations limit. And this was put into place back in 1979. And pre-COVID, the board would approve it, and it was just kind of a formality. It didn't really impact the state's budget process. But in the last couple of years, with the revenues being so high at the state level, it actually, our revenues at the state level were getting near that GAN limit or state allocation limit, or SAL, as they also call it, goes by all three of those names. And what that means is, if the state budget hits that GAN limit, about half of the revenues have to be returned to taxpayers, and about, and also half above the limit have to be returned to K through 12s or California community colleges. Now, in the last two years, the state has hit the limit, but just by a very small amount. And in this year's budget, they are not expecting to exceed the GAN limit. So that's important for us to be aware of. And it's interesting, the way the governor has created the budget, the reason why they're not going to be exceeding it is because they're taking actions to have proposals in the budget that keep them from excluding the GAN limit, so rebates to taxpayers and whatnot. So that's an interesting piece. If you're curious about that, I encourage you to read more because it's something that's, that's new, that hasn't happened in a, in a recent time period. Okay, let me see, I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Oh, in terms of a long-term outlook, the Legislative Analyst Office is saying that their, the state's budget deficit is anticipated to occur in 2025, 26. So they are looking at things trending down in the future, and also a strong possibility of a recession coming in the future. So. Now I'll get into some of the weeds here. So the good news of all of this new money coming to us from the state, we'll start off with the COLA. So within the Student-Centered Funding Formula, the budget includes a 6.5% COLA in the May revised. That equals $493 million for our system. So that is higher than the January's proposal in the 5% range. So we've landed at 6.5%. Additionally, separate from the COLA, with the Student-Centered Funding Formula, the budget includes a $375 million increase to our base, to our base rate and our basic allocation. So we were talking in the last few months since the January budget about the emergency conditions allowance going away, about how we were funded on pre-COVID FTS levels. There was a lot of angst among all of us of how is this going to shake out in the May revised? So this is how the legislature has dealt with that, is the emergency conditions allowance is going away, but they've increased our base allocation by $375 million. So we're working fast and furious to calculate that and see how that's going to impact us. But it's looking similar to our recent projections that we did back in April now. So that's great news. Then there's a handful of ongoing funding increases and then an additional one-time funding, which I mentioned earlier, a lot of one-time funds. A couple other ongoing funding items I want to point out, on the COLA, they do have the same 6.5% COLA for EOPS, DSPS, CalWorks, the various programs. That's very important because, as you know, when our staff get those COLA increases through negotiations, it goes to all employees regardless of whether or not the funding comes from a restricted funding source. So those are in there. There's also an additional $200 million for part-time faculty health insurance. This is something that I've, I've shared with Vice President Shanahan that we want to look into, maybe some funding that we could utilize that we haven't so far. So I need to learn more about that, but I wanted to highlight that one. There's also some technology money on the ongoing side and the one-time funding side. So we'll need to look into that and see how much money will be coming to us and how that could help our students with additional technology, technology resources. So that's on the ongoing side. Now, the one-time funding, the last two years, the state has provided to us pretty substantial deferred maintenance dollars. And those are the funds we've been using to do a lot of different deferred maintenance items that we need to do on the campus. It's not new funding. We typically get it every year. Sometimes the dollar amounts are small, sometimes they're large. But the last two years, the dollar amounts have been pretty large, and they've increased it even further to $863 million for fiscal year '22, '23. So that's even higher. Last year it was, or this year, I should say, see, sorry, I'm in two years already. This year it was $563 million to the cross-state, next year $863 million. So it's going to be a pretty substantial dollar amount for us that we'll have to do some planning on exactly what projects we'd want to do and then provide that information to the chancellor's office. So that's deferred maintenance is a, is a big ticket item. I do want to note, if anyone is going into the details, reading it, they talk about deferred maintenance being $1.5 billion, but it's a 1.5 over three different years. So that's why I just noted that it's $863 million next year. It's a little bit confusing in there. They're noting that it's the funding for three total years. The other really interesting one-time funding that they have put in, which is also a very large dollar amount, is $750 million for a discretionary block grant. Now, in the joint analysis document, they described that block grant as purely discretionary. The district can choose how it's utilized, but their intent of it was to help cover COVID-related expenditures and/or rising pension costs, you know, obligations, long-term pension obligations. But then in a webinar I was in today, they had a completely different list of intended uses for it that didn't mention those at all. You caught that trustee Croninger? So that was interesting. Today, they mentioned it was potentially for professional development, campus security infrastructure, technology infrastructure, developing open education resources and zero textbook cost degrees, and supporting mental health and wellness needs of students and staff. But again, today, they also restated that it's up to the destruction of the district. So they're just providing for us so far ideas. I'm very interested to see in what the final trailer bill language will look like for this funding. So far, it does state that this is funding for over five years. We would get it all at once, but it would be for us to spend it over five years. Okay. Oh, and also in terms of one-time funding, they have allocated another $150 million to retention and enrollment strategies. We received one-time funding for that this year, and it looks like we'll get more next year. So that's exciting. Let me see, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay. So the next steps, just as a refresher, we have our May revised, but the state does still have some more steps they need to get through before the budget is finally, is approved at the end. So the budget has to be approved by June 15. Between now and then, the budget subcommittees will meet, they'll review, they'll look at the proposals, they'll take action on them. And then the subcommittees have to make recommendations to their full committees, which then report it back to their respective houses. And then the houses have to meet, and again, the deadline of June 15. After June 15, what happened last year was a lot of trailer bill language, a lot of analysis of that language, us trying to figure out, okay, thanks for the budget, what does it mean with COVID and HERF and all of those things? So this year, I'm knock on wood, thinking it'll be a little bit calmer, but there will still be some updates that we'll be learning about analyzing from the chancellor's office and CCLC on what the trailer bill language is directing us to do on some of these special one-time funds. So those steps are still forthcoming over the next couple of weeks. So it'll continue to be exciting. As we get the final information about some of these special new funds. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Croninger.
A couple of questions and I don't know, or we're trying to figure that one out still is perfectly fine.
Yeah, it may be right now, but I'll do my best.
You mentioned the deferred maintenance, which is one-time money. Is over three years in three sets.
Right.
Is there been discussion about the risk that given the possibility of a recession? Or fiscal cliff as the LAO is talking about? That that will disappear again? We get the first year, but not the second year or the third year. How are they saving that money for us?
I'm glad you asked that because again, the reason why it's interesting that they said it's 1.5 billion. Is it's 1.5 billion with next year, 22, 23, being the third year. So I, I'm not sure why their language is written that way. I'm not an expert on it. But the language clarifies that that total 1.5 billion is actually for the money they gave us in 2021, 21, 22, and 22, 23. So this is the end of it. Instead of the beginning of the three years worth of dollars they're going to give us.
So, so you're saying we're in the third year of the 1.5 billion. We're not in the first year of it.
Correct.
Oh, disappointing.
Yeah, they are giving us until 2027 to spend the money, which I appreciate because that's, that's a lot of projects to do.
I'd still rather be in the front end of it.
Yeah.
Okay. The other question I had is that there was a slide that said COLA will stop applying to hold harmless districts in 24, 25. Do you know what that means?
I do, I do. And it's, I'm not an expert on it at all per se, but it's an interesting part of this proposal. So they're talking specifically about hold harmless, which is when a district has fallen so far below what the student-centered funding formula will fund you at based on your FTS that you're at this, you know, the base, the, the lowest you're going to get paid, you're at hold harmless. And among this, these changes to the emergency conditions allowance and the funding formula in general. They decided to benchmark the hold harmless at fiscal year 24, 25. Which is interesting because we're not there yet. So will this change between now and then? Possibly. But as you pointed out, there's this stipulation that they're saying the hold harmless will not include COLA going forward. What that means is we're not in holds harmless, but let's say we were, let's say we were in a district that was in hold harmless. And our hold harmless amount was $80 million and the state came to us and gives COLA. It would mean you wouldn't get the COLA. And year after year, you would, your funding level would be extremely low because you would miss COLA after COLA after COLA. This wasn't discussed a lot at the conference I was just at. Potentially maybe because it's far out, but it does sound strange. I don't know if Dr. Maria, if you have heard anything from the CEO groups.
Yeah, I'll add just a tad on that because Lindsay's right. I mean, this is what the deal is. And the way it's been described to me, especially in the meeting I had recently with some of the edge ledge representatives. This is to incentivize and make sure that colleges go on to the student-centered funding formula. In other words, there's only one college district in the state of California that's truly funded by the funding formula right now, one. And so the, one of the concerns is, are we going to keep funding you all this money with all of these declining enrollments? So they want to give us time, that's the reason for the 2020, 24, 25. To get back in place and be on the student-centered funding formula. And so that's the point where if you're not really, you know, getting funded that way by your 70% full-time, you know, FTS and then the 30% that's part of the supplemental and the success formula. Then you're, it's saying to you, if you can't do that, then you might want to start really taking care of your business of becoming more fiscally solvent. In other words, doing the work of fiscal stability, which is what we're going to do anyway.
Which is where we need to be because we're not that one district. We are a district that's relying on the emergency conditions allowance.
Right.
And they're now putting in this temporary increase to base, which we hope will put us about equivalent to where we are, but it's not likely to put us ahead.
No, not if, and, and it's a concern at the state level that we've had all these declining enrollments. But they also recognize that COVID has caused a lot of this and they want to give us time. So that's the 2024, 24, 25. To actually see if we can build back those enrollments, a lot of that one-time money and everything. But we've been told point blank and period, I don't know if the CPOs got told this, but the CEOs got told this. Is you need to be planning ahead for 24, 25. And if you're not starting to get back those enrollments and be on that funding formula. You need to start really thinking about right sizing or optimizing or whatever it is you want to call your college. And that's the issue of fiscal stability.
Yeah, I mean, for us declining enrollment isn't just COVID. I mean, we've been declining since nine, 10. And the demographics nationally and in California are, are against a dramatic increase. Now, that's not to say we don't have ideas about where more students might, might well come from, but it's not going to be easy.
No, and if you looked at the LA Times this morning, and I'm sure some of the board members saw that LA Unified School District basically has identified that over the next 10 years that they are going to be having to restructure because they're losing a huge amount of students. There's no projections that show them that they're going to have an increase. So we, we need to take heed with that because we haven't seen that here as much, but you know, it's what's going on. There's reports out nationally that the K-12 system has been declining. And so we have to think that through. So we're going to do, you know, I think that's part of our strategic piece is how we move forward. And start this work over fiscal stability. And we're also working to get our students back to the college. And, and some of the populations we've lost. So, well. Yeah, it's it's daunting and it's wonderful. We're getting all of this money. So I really hope we will use it really wisely to take care of our students and our employees and, and try to move this back. So we've got a lot of work to do the next 14 months.
Trustee Gallardo.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Lindsay. That was good. Kindred, one thing that Lindsay said that I'm interested in following up is if we can provide that health insurance for the part-time adjunct faculty. I think that that is important. And so that's available in what she said, I think it's worth at least keeping on top of it and seeing how we can learn more about that. Also, my question is, when will we have the conversation as to what to do with all this one-time money? And how we possibly might want to save it, et cetera, and all the available strategies?
I think as Vice President Moss noted, we, we won't have the finals and all the trailer language and all of that until the budget is actually approved, which hopefully will be somewhere around June 15. They've been doing really good with that. And then we start really doing the analysis. So a lot of the conversation will be over the summer and then into the fall because I think we're going to have to involve our college and right now our faculty are offsite. So that's, that's part of it. So we will do what we can as staff to start going through, seeing where, what our recommendations are. And then we also have a governance process that we go through for the conversations.
Okay. So now we're looking at just rolling conversations throughout the summer months. And, and then I will just note with the declining enrollment. The Arch Diocese in LA picked up enrollment and California across the board saw historic declines in K1 enrollment, but the private schools are going up in enrollment. So I think that one strategy continues to be getting rid of the mandate for Santa Barbara City College. Because that's one way to capture the kids and they're out there and I know them because I speak to them often. And the kids and the families are still there, they're just in private schools. So that's something to, for us to keep in the back of our minds. And it's not that they're going away, they're just saying no to public school because they don't like what's being offered at public school. But Santa Barbara City College is different. We're still a gem. People love us. And so I think that we can impact our enrollment and the impact we have with training and education, once we get that discussion going. And I know you're having it. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of our reports and information agenda section. Moving to the governing board. Up first, we have item 14.1. This is a resolution, Resolution Number 17, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Trustee Hasland had suggested that we, each of us on the dais and in virtual land take a paragraph and read through the resolution. So with that, I'm actually going to start with Trustee Gallardo and then move to Trustee Hasland and we'll go this way. So Trustee Gallardo, if you're able to see the resolution, if you want to start us off with the first whereas.
Thank you. Whereas the people of the United States join together each May to pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders who have enriched the history of the United States.
Whereas the history of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in the United States is inexorably tied to the story of this nation.
Whereas the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects.
Whereas the approximately 22 million residents of the United States who identify as Asian and approximately 1.6 million residents identify as Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, making up nearly 7% of the total population.
Whereas the month of May was selected for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Because the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May 7, 1843. And the first transcontinental railroad was completed on May 10, 1869, with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants.
Whereas on April 29, 2022, President Biden issued a proclamation on Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, recognizing the history, achievements, and diversity of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders. And the systemic barriers to economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, attainment, and personal safety experienced by many in the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community.
Whereas during Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Santa Barbara City College recognizes the innumerable contributions, vibrant cultures, and rich heritage of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders. AA and NHPIs. As some of the fastest-growing racial and ethnic groups in the nation, AA and NHPI communities represent a multitude of ethnicities, languages, and experiences that enrich America and strengthen our union.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Barbara Community College District hereby recognizes and wishes to join in with others across the United States to proclaim May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Back to you, Veronica.
Be it further resolved that May 1st to May 3rd, be first is recognized as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander contribute to our common goals, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And
Be it further resolved that the Santa Barbara Community College District recognizes the value and diversity of students, staff, faculty, and administrators who are Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders at Santa Barbara City College.
Thank you, everyone. And is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Everett, seconded by Trustee Hasland, and this will be a roll call vote.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving. That we then move to a much less exciting resolution, number 18. Authorizing teleconferencing for board members pursuant to AB 361. This is our pro forma resolution so that we continue having online and hybrid meetings. Is there a motion to pass?
So moved, second.
All right, moved by Trustee Miller, and seconded by Trustee Hasland and another roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. We're now at item 14.3, report from board members. Anybody have anything to report at this time? Trustee Gallardo.
Thank you, Kate. Yeah, Kendra, dual enrollment is up and running because of summer session. This has always been a busy time. And so if we could just get maybe an update, there's still, you know, some buzz and concern with. It just takes a while. It takes a really long time to get things approved and processed. I will say the faculty have been amazing because the students, what I'm hearing is they email the faculty and they're understanding. But the logistics of getting the high school paperwork to the college and who's approving it, it all just needs to be tied up. So if, if at some point in the near future, we can kind of get an update and see how we can continue to improve this.
Thank you. Trustee Everett.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I joined President Superintendent Dr. Maria and Trustee Gallardo at the Community College League's annual conference in Laguna Beach. And I just want to say as a first-time attendee at one of those conferences for trustees. It was a very, very informative and rewarding experience. But it was also great to be there in support of Dr. Maria. But I learned that she is so well-respected and regarded. I mean, people just came up to us and just said how lucky we were to have her. But it was a wonderful experience. There was so much that I'd like to share that I took copious notes on, but it was a very, very good conference and we learned a lot.
That's wonderful to hear. Trustee Haslam.
I, I attended a, a special event honoring and, and celebrating perhaps better the, the development of, partial development of our kitchen in the HRC program where we, we had an absolutely scrumptious meal prepared by a very enthusiastic staff. And, and I was saddened to learn that John Dunn, who had initiated all of that, had passed away about two years ago. And I don't know exactly why I didn't know that, but in the event that it hadn't been noticed. I, I want us to remember that.
We're now at item 15. Oh, sorry. Trustee Diallo.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to report, although you've already heard this, but we have a new student trustee who will be joining you in July because I still have to attend the next meeting in June 16 as my last. And the new student trustee, along with the other student government officials will be introduced as we have already been inaugurated two weeks ago. And I just want to appreciate you guys one more time for all the support throughout the year. And Dr. Marillo, especially for taking on the And Dr. Murillo, especially for taking on the initiative for the unity in the community festival. Like after that event, so many students were very happy. And some of them even said that after two years, this is the first time I felt like I'm in a college campus. So we hope that we can even make that as an annual event because it was very fulfilling to see all the students and everyone in the community smiling again and being happy to be on campus. And yeah, so does all the report I have for you today.
Thank you. And we are so grateful that we get to work with you again next year. Different capacity. But it has been wonderful to have you here. We're glad you're on for a bonus meeting next June. We do have something for you. Dr. Murillo, do you want to do the honors? And trustee Gallardo, did you want to jump back in?
Yes, I forgot the last thing. So Kendra, the other thing in the community right now with the governor having the transitional kindergarten now in all elementary schools. So these are our preschoolers in the fifth year, I guess you can think of right before kindergarten. The teachers have to be certified to be able to teach that particular grade level. So this for the college is both workforce development in addition to K-12 partnership. I did a quick search through our different community colleges. And obviously, DANSA has always had a robust ECE department in their own quarter so they can offer these courses more. So that's something if we can get on the agenda to talk about where we are with ECE. I made contact with folks over at First Five. And so there are some innovative things that they're already working with with other colleges, Allen Hancock, for example. And they also have a different program. And so the teachers actually only have now because this has been in place for some time. The teachers now only have one year. So twenty twenty three at the end is when they'll have to have this coursework completed. And so this is going to be important for the workforce in our town, in our county and for our young students. So that would be good for us to know where we are in supporting them.
Thank you. It's timely because I am just shifting us to items for future board consideration. And I will put that on the list. Anybody else have items for future board agendas at this time? Okay. Yes, trustee Gonder.
I'm just wondering if it would be possible to put that list that you just referenced in the future under item fifteen so we can see what's on it.
See it, okay. You can do that.
At our last meeting, we briefly discussed the possibility that the speaker could remove his or her mask for purposes of clarity. And I think, Marsha, you suggested that this needed to be developed at a formal board meeting. And if so, then I'd like to have that included.
Can we bring that to your study session next week, maybe as an item? That seems like that would be a really good, you know, place to chat. So we'll just put it as a, because we're going to have the first items budget, second item would be talking about the polling and the bond. And then we could do one item that talks about some of the things you guys would like to see changed in resolution one because we're working on it right now. So.
Great.
All right, with that, we are going to move to item sixteen point one. This is reconvening to closed session. We will report out when we're through and at that time we'll adjourn the meeting. So sorry, trustee Haslam.
Well, I'd like to, because when we come back, nobody else will be here.
That's true.
I suspect. And I wanted to, I wanted to dedicate and conclude this meeting in honor of Bill Miller, who passed away in, in early April of this year at age ninety seven. When I arrived on this campus in the fall of nineteen sixty nine, Bill Miller was already a senior member of the faculty. And he was remembered in a channels editorial that I saw not well earlier today. If, if I were to describe Bill Miller, when everything was calm, he would be steady as you go, very calm. When things were in an uproar, Bill Miller would be a calm person. He would be the stable element in any room. And he was, he was just a really, he was a dedicated faculty member, dedicated teacher of physics. And he truly cared about what he did. He loved teaching. And, and that's what, what appealed to me and we became fast friends. But the article in the channels did not include was that he was extremely fond of music, especially barbershop quartet in which he participated fully and even organized concerts on this campus so that the rest of us could understand why, why he was so dedicated to that process. So with that, I would, I would adjust to think about Bill Miller, a very calm, except when he was singing.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we adjourned for the session.
Thank you for staying.
All right. We are returning from closed session. The board took no reportable action in closed session. And with the permission of my fellow trustees, I hereby adjourn this meeting in the honor of Professor Meredith Bill Miller. And our next meeting will be a week from today. We have a special meeting study session. It is a Zoom meeting, so we will be meeting online for that one. Okay?